Apologies that he is unable to attend tonight's meeting due to feeling ill. And Ms. Lane had a prior engagement and is unable to be here tonight. So it will be the three of us. And with that, Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Sanderson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hartford?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Tui.
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the US with liberty and justice for all.
At this time is our Item A, which is our public comment items on the agenda. We have a five-minute speaker limit. If you'd like to speak on the items on the agenda, please fill out a speaker card and I will call you forward. And at this time, I have one speaker card. Ed Hildago.
Good evening, Mayor Sanderson, councilmembers, City Manager. I stand here before you on behalf of your maintenance labor group. As we try to move forward into recovery from the dismal economy that has affected all of us up and down the state across this great country, we appeal to you as our leaders that you do not implement your last and final offer of our last name negotiation and review the 75% of the budget that other labor groups have taken. For the second straight year, you have asked other labor groups, including our group, to take a punch in the gut for the city while other groups have not. This inequity of benefits between all of your labor contracts has put a strain on negotiating teams trying to figure out why they feel less important to the city. The deficit you have created by your generous benefit practices to yourselves, management, and sworn labor groups over the past 10 years has put this city in a financial crisis. Asking the maintenance group to take a salary reduction to pay for these things is unfair. It is now in the minds of many taxpayers as to how, what, and why so many cities are struggling to meet their budget. These problems are clearly the result of many city leaders and labor groups not working together. Our group, for the most part, can understand if everyone gives an equal amount of salary reduction from the city's top-paid employee to the city's lowest-paid employee, it would be a step in the right direction. In our group, it has never been about salaries but the equity of benefits. When a person from another labor group can work here just five years, as a result of this city would be fully invested in the PERS retiree medical benefit package offered by the city. You have employees that have worked here for over 30 years that aren't sworn or management that cannot retire now, as the RHS setup a few years back will only cover maybe five years of retiree medical premiums. At age 50, for sworn, and 55 for management, some could retire earlier than other city employees, as the city will pick up the retiree medical premium benefit or use their PERS medical fund created for the sole purpose of having another income for retiree medical premiums. This was truly a slap in the face to our group after we had agreed to start the RHS We ask that you think of all employees and coworkers in making your decisions on the future of the city and not put the financial burden on the lower-level labor groups until you have met with the labor groups that take up most of the budget. Asking the other labor groups to cut back on overtime, not filling positions, and using the contract-obligated quote is no excuse to try to reopen their contracts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I have no other speaker cards. And at this time, Item B1, I look for a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
So moved.
A motion on consent, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes for the consent calendar. The next item on our agenda is Item C1, which is our human resources, meet and confer non-sworn safety support bargaining unit. At this time, it's been set aside for discussion of Items C1 and C2 to meet and confer impasse between the City of West Covina, both non-safety-supporting bargaining unit and the West Covina Maintenance and Craft Employees Association. First, we'll have a staff report, a presentation, and at the conclusion of the staff report, those labor representatives from either the non-safety-support bargaining unit and West Covina Maintenance Crafts Employee Association will be able to present any additional pertinent information for the city council's consideration. At the conclusion of any additional comments, city staff will have the opportunity to respond to the additional information presented by the two labor associations. Mr. City Manager, who will present the staff report?
Mr. Bachman will do that report.
Thank you.
Okay, as part of this report, and this will cover actually both the two groups that are in impasse, but first I want to give a little bit of a background of the process that we've gone through over the last several months. We've engaged in the formal meet-and-confer process with all the five miscellaneous groups whose contracts were expiring at the end of the fiscal year. It's important to note there are some comments made about the public safety units or not all units participating. Well, the public safety units are under contract through 2012, and the ability to negotiate those contracts or concessions with those groups is severely limited because those groups are under contract. So we've engaged in the meet-and-confer process with all the five miscellaneous groups. You know, it's much documented, the financial condition that the city is facing along with a lot of other cities these days, and we've looked to the employees to assist in being part of that solution. Those units where they are still under contract, they took pretty significant budget reductions in services that reduced staffing, reduced overtime, and reduced other things that were available to those employees in those units. We took a little different approach this year. Rather than waiting for the associations to make proposals to the city, we made initial proposals to the units. And those consisted mainly of concessions that we were seeking in an effort to help reduce the budget gap. And throughout these negotiations, all groups have indicated a willingness to assist. We did come to agreement with three of the five groups. That would be the general, the confidential, and the mid-management associations. Those groups that we could not come to agreement with, we had agreement on a number of items within those proposals, but there were certain items that we just could not agree to, and that led to the impasse declarations by the two units. As we got towards the end of the process, the city did submit its last best and final offer to both of those groups. And those last best and final offers are very similar to those agreements that were reached with the other three groups. And the main components of those were a one-year term through June 30, 2011, a 5% salary reduction in return for furlough hours of 104 hours, which is equivalent to 5%. We were going to maintain all their current health benefits. We weren't looking for any takebacks there, as well as other benefits. The city was proposing, did propose, and did come to agreement on a two-tier retirement system as the first step into reducing our long-term liabilities related to future pension costs. That consisted of moving to a new 2:60 formula with the employees paying 100% of the employee's share, which is now absorbed by the city. And those are the main terms. And again, we did reach agreement with three of the groups on there. We were not able to reach agreement with the non-sworn group or the maintenance and crafts group. So at the end of this process, we submitted them a last best and final offer, as indicated. They did take those offers and put them to a vote of their associations. Those were voted down by the membership within those associations. Subsequent to that, their representatives issued us letters of impasse and requested that the city council direct us to go to mediation. Pursuant to the personnel rules, once the side declares impasse, the city council must set a time, a date and time for hearing the matter, which has been done by virtue of this meeting this evening. They've been allowed to present oral information. Their impasse letters were attached to the staff report, which is attached to the staff report this evening. There was also an additional letter from the non-sworn group that was transmitted directly to the city council via email today. They will also be given an opportunity to speak. There will be, one representative will be allowed to speak on behalf of each group. They'll be limited to a 10-minute maximum speak to make their presentation as to why they think their matters are important or something that the city council should seriously consider. At the end of those presentations, city staff will also make a response as well, outlining the positions and why the city took those specific positions. And at that point in time, after hearing them, the city council can either adjourn to closed session or they can make a decision at the time. And the options for final determination include imposing the city's last best and final offer, agreeing with the association's last offer, which is included in your agenda packet. You can refer the matter to the city manager for mediation. You can grant the city's bargaining team additional authority and send them back to the bargaining table, or you can do nothing and the status quo will continue. So with that, we will open up, we'll start with the non-sworn, and what we'll do here is we'll take both items. We'll do the non-sworn public safety support group first. They'll make a presentation. We'll make a response. We'll set that one aside for a minute. We'll do the maintenance and crafts. We'll let their representative make their presentation. We'll make a response, and then we'll bring it back to the city council, either for discussion, make a determination, or adjourn into closed session. So with that, it would be appropriate to direct the representative from the non-sworn group to make their presentation.
Okay, at this time, if there's any questions by city council members. Okay, seeing none, at this time, I will call forward our first, our non-sworn, which is Beth Zindejas.
Good evening. My name is Beth Zindejas, and I'm from San Bernardino Public Employees Association, representing the non-sworn safety support. I'm here tonight in lieu of Tom Ramsey, as he had conflicting schedule commitments. Earlier today, you were provided with our bargaining unit's actual position statement in regards to the impasse reached during negotiations, and I know you have received that, so I won't go over that again here. We do apologize for not having given that to you earlier. However, we were unaware of this meeting until noon on Monday. The unit is aware of the city's financial situation and is willing to, I'm sorry, Zach, and is willing to work with the city in dealing with the issue. The items on which impasse have been declared are not financial issues per se, but rather items dealing with the layoff policy. As is indicated in our position paper, the city brought the layoff policy to the negotiating table, and while we understand the city's desire that it is not to be a part of the memorandum of understanding, it is mandatory subject of bargaining. And regardless of where it may end up, the obligation of both parties to the process is the same as any other issue that impacts wages, hours, terms, and conditions of employment. In this economy and in looking what is happening in public agencies all around us, layoff policies take on a whole new level of importance to public employees who may be faced with losing their jobs, especially where, despite how much employees may be reluctantly willing to give back, their employer is unwilling or outright refuses to give employees any kind of guarantee or assurance that they will not be laid off. We are asking the city council to re-refer these negotiations to the city manager for mediation, as provided for in the personnel rules and has been the city's past practice. It is our belief that with the help of professional mediator, the opportunity for achieving a mutual agreement on the impasse issues is much greater. If after mediation we have not been successful, this council still has the authority to make the final decision on the impasse. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, Mr. City Manager, should I call forward then our representative for the maintenance at this time? Is that correct? Mr. Bachman?
We'd just like to make a quick response to the issue.
Okay, all right, go ahead. Mr. City Manager, who will make that response?
Mr. Bachman will do that response.
Okay. There was essentially four items that they raised during their impasse declaration, and two of them are related to the layoff policy. And they revolve around, one of them revolves around the definition of seniority. And maybe just a little bit of background as to why this item came up. The city last year endeavored to update its layoff policy, which hadn't been updated since 1994. It was put in place back then, my understanding, never used, but contained some outdated and now illegal things that don't comply with the law, some approaches as to how certain positions are laid off. So this endeavor started as to correcting the parts that are no longer legal, as well as updating the policy. And in fact, you know, worked with some of the groups and actually made this what we believed was a more employee-friendly layoff policy, included some additional things like the motions in lieu of layoffs. So we thought there were some additional benefits to the employees that made it a little more workable. Layoffs are not a pleasant thing. It's not something, you know, we hope we have to go down that road, but we do realize that we have to have a conforming policy in place. And as part of that policy, because that's a change to our personnel rules, we do have to meet and confer with all bargaining units. And we started this process last summer, worked through the fall, got something, finally finished up, put it out to all the departments as we're required to do, to request comments on it. Eight of the nine groups declined to have any comments. They were satisfied with the product we had delivered. The one group that did not was the non-sworn group. And just timing as such, they brought it into labor negotiation. The city's always taken the position that we don't want this as part of negotiation. We've always rejected the position that it be part of negotiation. We think this is better held outside of negotiations and dealt with, you know, let's address the layoff policy. We don't think it's wise to have a separate layoff policy for one group that's different than the layoff policy that's in existence for the rest of the city employees. And when you get into bumping rights and other things like that, where employees may cross over into different bargaining groups, that could have some administrative ramifications if you've got two different policies in place. The issue is the definition of seniority. Layoffs have to be based solely on seniority, but the city does have the ability to determine what seniority is. And the city, in its prior policy, the city in its proposed policy has seniority defined as time within their current class. What the unit is requesting is that time be with the city altogether, whereas you may have an employee that's been with the city for 20 years and has time in class, so five years in the class, and you may have another employee in that same position that's only been with the city for 10 years but has 10 years in that class. And that person would have seniority when it came to bumping rights. The person with less tenure with the city but more seniority in the class. Now, the person with more seniority with the city and less seniority in class would still have bumping rights and the ability to retain a job within the city workforce. So we think they still have protections within employment, within the city ranks. The second issue related to part-timers and, you know, who gets laid off first, whether part-time and temporary. And I think there may be some valid points to that, but again, just think that this is best left to a further negotiation. We're willing to continue these discussions with the group to try and work these out through the course of the year. And again, just don't believe it's proper to do it here without affecting the policy from the citywide. We don't think it should be part of the MOU. We think it should be consistent in the citywide policy. The other items of impasse are is the two-tier retirement system that's been agreed to by the other groups. I think we've all seen what's going to happen with our pension costs long-term. This while not going to save us initially money is a step in the right direction towards curbing our long-term pension costs. And the group has indicated that they would be willing to agree to this policy if the city were to agree to the layoff policy. So while there is some level of acceptance for it, it's contingent on some other things within their MOU. The significance of this, too, is that the other groups have agreed to this. If they were not to agree with this, this could not be implemented because you have to have the same retirement plan for all groups within your miscellaneous employment base. And the last item was the number of hours for furloughs. Last year, we granted 80 hours to the miscellaneous employees, and this group received 40 hours. And the reason they received that number is because the 24-hour operation, the nature of the work that this group provides, which when people are off, a lot of the times, it results in overtime. So there's an acknowledgement here that, you know, somebody else is off that requires backfill because they do have minimum staffing levels that they need to meet. And once they get to that level, then it forces them into overtime issues, which does increase compensation. So it was agreed on, you know, essentially a 50% of what everybody else received last year. We proposed 50 hours to them this time, which is roughly 50% of what the other miscellaneous or groups, they have countered with 60 hours. So there's not a huge gap there. It's just something that we couldn't agree on in the totality of a package. So those are the city's positions on those various items of impasse on that. It would now be appropriate to call up the representative for the maintenance and craft unit.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bachman. The next speaker, representing the maintenance, John Adams.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, city manager, staff, thank you for the opportunity to address your body tonight on this issue. Let me preface my comments by saying, although the unit is at impasse with the city in the meet-and-confer process for the MOU, this is not what I would characterize as a traditional impasse, where not before you with a clenched fist. I want to commend Mr. Bachman and his staff on the conduct of the meet-and-confer process. They were extremely professional. They were informative and forthright with information we asked for and contributed greatly to maintaining a very congenial atmosphere throughout the meet-and-confer process. It is simply a matter of, given some historical problems and some specific issues that arose during this negotiations, we were not able to come to a total agreement. Mr. Bachman has provided a very, I think, informative staff report framing the issues of impasse for our unit and management's current response to those issues. The one issue stated was on the issue of the furlough and how that would be administered. And he made comment that we had reached a tentative agreement on that, which is true. However, as tentative agreement states and is understood in the meet-and-confer process, nothing's final till everything is final. So any agreement in that area is tentative to reaching an agreement on all items, which we did not. The next issue, vacation cash-out, kind of frames a concern for the bargaining unit. And certainly, we struggled for a number of years with inequities between safety and non-safety groups within the city and the compensation and benefit packages. This time, our group sees that even going beyond safety and non-safety and finding ourselves in an inferior position to even other non-sworn bargaining units and how the furlough is going to be administered, which focuses on the vacation cash-out. Our unit does not and has not had a vacation cash-out benefit, but other non-sworn units within the city, specifically mid-management and confidential-exempt, have the ability to cash in vacation hours, in the case of mid-management, up to 60 hours. So if you are experiencing 104-hour furlough, but you can redeem 60 hours of that by cashing in vacation time, it lessens the financial impact on the individual that is dealing with that issue. The only ones who are not being allowed to cash in vacation time are those at the very lowest end of the base scale. Therefore, they carry a heavier burden in the furlough and in the concessions than other groups that are making higher salaries than they are and presumably are in a better position to weather the furlough than these other rank-and-file units. So it was a real equity issue, not just as it relates to public safety. And in Mr. Bachman's report, he indicates that police and fire rank-and-file do not have vacation cash-out benefits, yes, but they also do not have a furlough, and they're also getting pay raises. So it's not really a relevant issue to them. And again, you can't say they haven't been able to negotiate that because they're in the context of a multi-year agreement and are not negotiating, and then, you know, tell us, well, we can't ask them for concessions because they're in that position. It can't swing both ways. It just, you know, has to work one way or the other. And this type of a double standard, we continued to struggle with in the process, in that some things we asked for, well, that can't be addressed because other groups similar to yours don't have it. And then other things that we want to discuss that other groups have, it's, well, you know, they're public safety or they're in the context of a current agreement, therefore, we can't address that with you. So we felt like, you know, we were dealing with a double-edged sword there. An issue of impasse that was really significant to us was the appeals process. Currently, on disciplinary appeals, employees in the unit cannot appeal a disciplinary action of five days or less beyond the department level. And we had an experience to take an employee through that process. And even not being able to appeal beyond the departmental level, which we felt he received very arbitrary and capricious treatment by department management, when we were assured by the assistant city manager and the human resources manager that department management would meet directly with us to discuss the employee's appeal, department management failed to meet with us and has, from my knowledge, refused to meet with us to discuss that issue. So this employee dealt with a suspension from work without pay, without ever having the opportunity to present his case and be represented in that presentation, and no appeal process beyond the department level. So our position was, we can no longer tolerate a process that doesn't allow us to appeal beyond the department level. We asked for an appeal to the city manager or his designated representative if it cannot be worked out at the department level. The indication in the staff report was that the current process has served the city well. Well, yeah, unquestionably, in public works, it's served the city well because they can be arbitrary and capricious with the employee and just summarily dismiss them on disciplinary actions that are less than five days. Full shift holidays was an issue. The city's response to us on full shift holidays, because our members work a 4:10, was they would grant that in lieu of us reducing the floating holidays by 16 hours. And they cited the fact that other units had agreed to full shift holidays for a reduction to 24 hours of floating time in kind. But as it relates to this particular bargaining unit, it takes us two hours additional time to make up a holiday. So when a holiday occurs, the employee gets eight hours of holiday pay and has to come up with two hours someplace else. So the burden, again, on the unit was twice that of what it would be for people under a 980 schedule to add an hour to make up their time. Retirees' med was an issue, and again, the staff report indicated that there was a tentative agreement to drop the issue, but again, tentative agreement to drop the issue pursuant to reaching agreement on all other items. When that agreement was not reached, that still becomes an issue to us. We recognize the economic difficulty of dealing with conversion from a defined benefit to a defined contribution program at this time. And we don't think there is any question, although we debate the numbers with the finance director, that long-term, there is more cost to the city to have a defined benefit plan than there is to have a defined contribution plan. But we do see, when we went to the RHS plan, which is defined contribution, we felt we were being innovative, creative, and creating a win-win situation for the city and for our members, and had reasonable assurance that this would be an approach the city would take with all bargaining units, only to see them expand the defined benefit program for public safety. So now we have a situation where we have many people that continue to work beyond the retirement age. They've reached their retirement goals, but they can't afford the cost of medical insurance after retirement, therefore, they continue to work. So it's kind of a counterproductive thing. We felt by switching to the defined benefit plan, because the city's defined contribution plan has a lump-sum seniority clause payoff, that that money would be saved by the city for short-term savings and could be amortized out against the increased cost of the defined benefit plan, and the city would not, in fact, incur additional costs for many years down the road by saving that money. At the time that RHS plan was instituted, we were told the lump-sum payoff obligation of the city approached $1 million. The vast majority of that still sits with the city and has not been granted to employees who have retired in a couple of years since that plan's been in effect, so there was a potential savings there. So we weren't just being callous to the fact that the city is in a position where they have to be very careful with how dollars are spent. So those are kind of, you know, our reactions to the impasse issues and management's comment about them. We certainly understand the realities of the economic situation we're dealing with. We commend the city council for the leadership and discernment that you've shown in guiding the city through these difficult times, but we believe there are a couple of equity issues here that need to be addressed to demonstrate to these employees that just because you're at the to these employees that just because you're at the lower end of the pay scale doesn't mean you're going to carry a heavier burden in the cuts, and doesn't mean that the city doesn't consider you skilled and valuable employees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bachman, please.
Okay. And I, at this time, just like to give you the city's position on the various items raised. And again, and I think Mr. Adams said it well, that Items 1 and 5, those were items that we had agreements, their latest proposals did include the 5% salary reduction and the furlough program as part of that. It also did not include the retiree benefit on the defined benefit plan. Let me address that one first. The defined benefit plan for retirement, the city's trying to, to, you know, address its, not only its short-term cash flow needs, but its long-term financial needs as well. And, you know, we know pension costs are going to grow. We don't want to see our retiree medical costs grow as well. Mostly, the private sector's been way ahead of this. They've eliminated these programs long ago. Governments are now catching on. Those that did provide the defined benefit plan are changing out of it and going into more what we had moved to with these groups, which was the retiree health savings plans. And it really, it boils down to cost, and it boils down to shared responsibility. And that was one of the things we discussed at great length when we did this program about four years ago with the miscellaneous groups, is that employees need to, there needs to be a shared responsibility for your retirement, to provide both for your cost of living, but also for your retiree medical needs. And it was envisioned that this retiree health savings plan would grow over time. It would be a less costly plan for the city, but it would still provide some level of support for the employees as well. When you match that up with the $100 that they're mandated to receive under PERS, if they decide to participate in the PERS plan, they already get $100 a month from the city from that. When you match it up with the retirement, and again, it was envisioned that this program would grow, there'd be greater contributions by both the city and the employees as this plan matured over time. So, we think that was, still think that was a good strategy, both for the city from a cost-effective standpoint, and it does provide something with the, for the employee as well. The furlough program, you know, it's, again, it's something that they had tentatively agreed to. I understand that there's nothing, nothing is agreed to unless everything's agreed to, but that was something that they were willing to participate in. On the vacation buyback, and again, this is, this is something that would increase the cost. The city, as part of its budget, adopted a budget that was premised on the fact that all miscellaneous employees would take a 5% salary reduction, and with the miscellaneous groups in return for a furlough program, allowing them, a group that has not had this benefit, it's essentially, it's granting a new benefit, and the cost savings that you would achieve through the furlough would in many cases be, be, you know, wiped away by people buying back vacation. What we did with the other groups, mid-management and the confidential groups, is we severely limited their ability. We did this last year with the furlough program. We put that in place, knowing that if you grant somebody a furlough and somebody does, typically does not buy back their vacation, well, they're just going to buy back their vacation at that time because they've got a new, a new bank of leave hours that they can use instead of using their vacation. So, it will be trading one leave for another. So, we severely limited their ability to buy back vacation, both by putting a floor on it, which did not exist in the past. They can no lon, they can't buy vacation until they have a minimum of 200 hours on the books. And we also cut in half the number of hours that they're able to buy back within a year. So, there were restrictions put in place for the reasons that were addressed here earlier, that they're just being able to offset the salary reduction that they're taking by buying back vacation. On the disciplinary process, you know, we do disagree that, you know, the decisions made there are arbitrary and capricious. We think there was good rationale for what happened in the particular instance that was addressed here earlier. We don't think, because they believe that there was, you know, the decision was handled wrong, that we should change our entire policy as to how we handle the disciplinary process within the city. And finally, on the issue of holidays, last year, certain groups, and this stems way back to when everybody used to work a 5:40 and eight-hour holidays were the standard, but when we changed into flexible schedules, either nine-hour days or 10-hour days, it becomes an issue because employees have to use other forms of leave to make up for a holiday. The groups had decided they wanted full shift, they wanted 10 hours or nine hours, whatever schedule they're working. They gave up floating holidays to get that. There's eight fixed holidays, which equates to two hours a day, which is 16 hours. In addition to those eight fixed holidays, they also get 40 hours of floating time. So, the, we did not want to increase the benefit. We think 13 holidays is a fairly generous and competitive holiday plan when you look at what's out there in the market. So, and it was their choice, essentially. If they wanted to have full shift holidays, if they wanted to get 10 hours because they work 10-hour days, then we would reduce their, their floating holidays from 40 down to 16. So, we were trading one type of holiday bank for another type of holiday bank. It was a no-cost item for the city. What's being requested here would increase their, their holiday hours essentially from 13 eight-hour days to 15 eight-hour days. And I don't think at this point in time, with the economy the way it is, and just from a market standpoint, with what's competitive out there, we don't think 15-hour, or 15 holidays is something that's necessary. So, that's the city's position as it relates to the various items raised here. I'll turn it back to the council. They have a couple of options at this point. They can, they can discuss it now, they can, they can make a, and make a decision, or they can adjourn into closed session, and we can discuss anything further, maybe some of the issues that have been raised here tonight, if possible. So, I'll turn it back to the dais.
Council's pleasure.
Motion, adjourn into closed session.
I have a motion.
I'll second that. I just want to make a comment, if I could.
Mayor Pro Tim Herbert.
Thank you, and thank you to the speakers that came up. Obviously, you, and we are aware of the difficult economic situations of the city of West Covina. One of our goals, I think, on the council this year was to not lay off any employees if possible. We ended the year with a fiscal, or we started the year with a budget that had a fiscal deficit of over $3 million. We could have gone deeper into cuts, and we felt that that would be not only harmful to our residents, but to our employees of our city, who we think do a great job. It's unfortunate that the economy is the way it is. I think the employees have given up a lot. Hopefully, someday, that'll turn around and they'll, they'll go back to the way it was. I think in the 20 years I've been on City Council, one of the first times we've ever gone to impasse with a group. I take that back, in 94, I think you did go to impasse with the public safety group. But it's never easy to do that, and I understand. Maintenance guys, I mean, you're some of the best workers we have, and even though we probably aren't achieving what you would like us to achieve, you know, understand that we see you out there working hard and you do a great job. So, it's, it's just difficult times. And non-sworn safety, same thing with you. You do, you know, 24/7 protecting our residents. It's unfortunate that we don't have a different situation, but I just wanted you to know from our side, we do have a heart, and we do understand the economy and the public's feeling out there. And at this time, they don't seem to want to raise taxes, and it's, it's a period we're going through, and hopefully it'll get better this year, and we'll be in better shape next year.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
I did, sir.
To go into a closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're briefly going to closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the record, the record should reflect that the council now temporarily table Items C1 and 2 as listed on the agenda and adjourned to closed session pursuant to Item Number 4, I'm sorry, Item D, on the agenda, Conference with Labor Negotiators, presented government code section 54957.6, as posted on the agenda, Employee Organizations, Maintenance and Crafts Employees and Non-Sworn Safety Support.
We will be returning, sure. So, they know we're not going away from this.
That's right. We're temporarily tableing Items C1 and 2, and we'll resume those when we get out of closed session.
Are we going upstairs, or are we going upstairs?
Very close.
it's a, we can say 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 it's a, we can say